Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, Downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Well, welcome. It's a beautiful spring-like day in Lorraine County. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
And our prayer this morning is from First Peter. God has given gifts to each of you from His great variety of spiritual gifts. Manage them well so that God's generosity can flow through you. If you're called to be a speaker, then speak as though God Himself were speaking through you. Are you called to help others? Do it with all the strength and energy that God supplies, then God will be given glory. And we have our dog this morning with Commissioner Kaloe presenting.
Our featured dog this week is a six-month-old male boxer.
Hello there. Yes, hi there. He's a keeper.
Yeah, he's a keeper. He's actually available for adoption today. Great dog, great personality. But we also have 27 other dogs. It was a busy weekend. We picked up 10 this weekend with the nice weather, so stop by, visit our dog kennel, and find a new friend.
We have a proclamation today to proclaim the month of March as Developmental Disabilities.
Dr. Amber Fisher, do you have a presentation you'd like to make this morning?
We do. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to start by thanking all three county commissioners and Jim Cordez for your ongoing support of the mission and work of Murray Ridge Center and for your assistance as the system for serving people with developmental disabilities faces unprecedented changes. While we're not pleased about every change that we're being asked to make, we are actively and eagerly embracing the challenge to assist as many individuals as possible, to be employed in integrated community settings, and to be actively involved in community life. And that is what Developmental Disabilities Month is all about. It's about spreading the word that people with developmental disabilities are talented and reliable employees, upstanding citizens with a desire to give back, loyal friends, and really fun people to be around. This year, I'm not going to review our many programs for Lorraine County residents with developmental disabilities of all ages, but I would like to highlight our Service and Support Administration function because we frequently tell the story about our direct services, but we sometimes forget to point out the critically important role of our Service and Support Administrators at Murray Ridge. Some of the functions of our SSAs include developing individual, person-centered plans for more than 1,700 eligible individuals, connecting these individuals with needed resources, and helping them to select their service providers. Our SSAs also authorize funding for services and monitor those services to ensure health, welfare, and satisfaction of individuals served. As always, our story is best told through the experiences of those we serve, and today I have some friends to help me do just that. The first person that we would like to highlight is John Aheart. John represents the majority of adults involved with Murray Ridge programs in that he lives with his parents. His Service and Support Administrator works with him to design and coordinate Medicaid waiver services, including Supported Employment provided by Murray Ridge, and Community Access Services provided by an independent provider. In fact, John's Service and Support Administrator, Sully, is here with him today, and I told her I wouldn't make her stand up, but Sully's here. She plays a very important role in John's life. John's Medicaid waiver enables Murray Ridge to access federal funding to cover 60% of the cost of the services that I've described, and John also participates actively in the Murray Ridge Special Olympics program. So with that, John, would you come up and tell everybody a little bit about your services?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm John Aheart. I've been working, like, um, with Sully, she brought me here today, so I work in that kind of crew jobs at the, that's the same building. I've been, like, you know, different jobs I've been doing, crashers and stuff, and I've been busy with that, and the home and stuff like that, so... I got a little jokes about that, that much. I got a dog, it's a bison mix.
Oh.
So I got that and a cat both, but you know how that is. I've been working different kind of jobs. I might do some, like, couple of jobs sitting there, like rest area and stuff like that. I help my mom a lot with my dad and all that, so, you know, I've just been through a lot, you know. I just, I've been, I'm a weight wrestler, too.
Wow, how much can you lift?
So, I like doing that here and there, you know, not too much. I've been, I do bowling, bowling class, I don't know how many years, and that's all I'm on a bowling thing. Every Saturdays, I go bowling every Saturdays. My score is going up, so...
Yeah.
So I'm doing good on that, so...
Good.
I've been, been through a lot with a lot of people, you know, bowling, put me around and stuff, and I was like, I'm going to learn that stuff. I'm starting to go to people's side.
Yeah, you're doing a lot of good things and a lot of good work and looking mighty snazzy today.
Yeah.
Looking good.
Yep.
Thank you, John, for sharing that story with us.
Thank you, John.
Well, I tell you, he's hard to keep up with. He works so many jobs and he's a hard worker, and I do believe that his bowling score is quite a bit higher than mine, so... The second person that we would like to introduce to you today is Marcy Cohen. And Marcy has been an active participant in our Supported Employment Program since she came to Murray Ridge 13 years ago. Marcy also lives with her parents, and they're actually here with her today. Marcy has worked at The Red Lobster and at Oberlin College in the Dish Room, but recently she made it clear that her dream was to be a baker. And our Supported Employment Team assisted Marcy to do job shadowing at Amherst IGA, and after just two job shadow experiences at the IGA Bakery, Marcy was hired as a bakery associate. And Marcy is also becoming quite the communications specialist and ambassador for Murray Ridge. Last August, she did interviews on the radio at both WOBL and WEOL about her job, and just Monday night, she presented to the Carlisle Township Board of Trustees about her job. So without any further ado, Marcy, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I work at, I work at IGA and the bakery. We, we, um, I make, I make banana bread, I do boxes, and they have a pizza name after me.
Really?
Marcy's Deluxe Pizza.
All right.
And I work the, um, I work the cottage, too, so I work both of them. But if you want me to talk about more IGA, I think I should talk about more IGA.
Okay, sure.
Um, I made some sausage lasagna for them, too, so they loved it to death. So I've been working it for a while, and I love my job in the bakery.
That's great.
And I live with my mom and dad. They're here with me, too. I have a brother that's at home, too.
A brother?
Yeah.
Younger or older?
He's 40. So we get along good at home. I get along with my mom and all of them. And I work the cottage when I'm not working the bakery, so I get along with certain people. There are certain people I don't get along with.
We have that happen, too, so don't worry about that.
Certain people I don't get along with. I try. It doesn't work all the time.
At least you're trying, right?
But at the bakery, I get along with everybody.
Because you're doing what you love, right?
Yep, I'm doing what I love.
Good.
So, and, um, when I'm done, I go home and poo with my dog that's at home. She's my little baby girl. So I think I'm done for now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy.
Great time. Great time. Boy, she was telling me before the meeting about all of the baking that she does, and I could never, never keep up with her in this lifetime. She's so talented. Our last representative today is Aiden Harper, and Aiden is here to represent Murray Ridge Center's Early Childhood Programs. Aiden is currently six, and he was referred to Murray Ridge by the Illyria School District. He is in our Primary Education Program and has a nurse with him at all times that is provided by the Illyria Schools, and she's there to assist him with his personal care and his medical needs. And although he's currently in our School Age Program, he first came to us in 2009 as a participant in our Early Intervention Program. So Aiden is very friendly, he is an absolute joy to be around, and he is our youngest Murray Ridge Ambassador. So with that, Aiden and Jessica, who's Aiden's nurse, will come up and give you a message.
Thank you for supporting Murray Ridge.
All right. Thank you, Aiden.
Thank you, Aiden.
All right, good job, Aiden.
Good job.
Good job, buddy.
Okay, well, that concludes our presentation. Thank you to all of our ambassadors and their advocates for being here, and again, thank you for supporting the work of Murray Ridge.
Well, Dr. Fisher, we would like to proclaim March 2016 as Developmental Disability Awareness Month throughout Lorraine County. Won't necessarily read you the whole proclamation, but we'd like to present this to you on behalf of yourself, your staff, and your board, and in recognition of the fine work that's being done by your staff and also the parents and everything that they do, and John and Marcy and Aiden for making the trip over here today to join us and make a presentation, and the board collectively would like to come down and present this to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for being here this morning, and feel free, I know you've got other things you need to attend to today, so don't worry if you need to leave right now, that's fine.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Madam Clerk, we have an appointment this morning.
We do. Soil and Water?
Okay. Will? Yeah, either, either podium.
Good morning.
Yes, first off, I'd like to congratulate everyone.
I mean, my mom, she, she has a part, not, not in Murray Ridge, but in a different position, and it takes a special heart, though.
Yeah, they do amazing work there.
Yes, definitely. Well, good morning. It's a wonderful day today. Everyone's seen the beautiful sunrise this morning. It's nice and warm out.
Thank you.
I'd like to take this time to introduce myself. I'm Will Schlechter, Chairman of the Soil and Water Board. Lori Beavitt, he's the Vice Chairman. Randy White, he is a Wildlife Officer with Lorraine County, and Chip, um, sorry.
Jeff.
Jeff, Jeff, sorry, Jeff. Jeff Westerfield, he's, uh, he's with the district. He oversees 19 counties in our area. I believe you've been briefed a little bit on the position that's been available for us. Well, today I come here excited and nervous, not knowing how things are going to go today because I know you guys are on a very tight budget, but the reason I am excited is we have a position that's come to us. Out of the 19 counties, the Division of Wildlife came to us. Out of the 19 counties they have, our county they see as being the greatest need for this position. And later, I'd like to have them come up and kind of tell us what the position actually entails, so...
Do you know why we were selected? What, what our situation is that makes us a community?
Randy, he is very, very busy, and there's just not enough of him to go around. And what he was telling me earlier today is it's because we have the urban area and the rural area, and where those places collide, you know, we're always pushing the deer out and wildlife, and so people have problems, and people in the rural areas, they're able to handle wildlife pretty good, but when wildlife gets into urban areas, they're not accustomed to that, I guess I would say. So they may need assistance and help with that. I know in Avon Lake, they have a big deer problem, and that's something that this person could help with. You always have this in your head that it's going to be really great, but...
You're great, go ahead. You're fine.
Go ahead, it's your budget, Will.
It's not fatal. We've never had anyone die during a presentation, so you're fine.
Well, anyway, with, I guess, going back to the budget, and I realize you guys are on a tight budget, and we've been on a very tight budget. We've been cutting everything we can. We basically had nothing left to cut, and we're kind of getting on a shortfall here. We're barely skimming by this year. We've had some savings that we've been using up. This year, we've had to cut into our district fund, which is our fund for scholarships and fair and stuff like that, and the monies that we raised from that is from our seedling sale and our fish sales. And so, I mean, we really appreciate all the funding we've gotten in the past, but it just isn't enough to have Caroline and basically another, just one other's office secretary, and those are the two real positions that we have. Carl is there, he's one, one day a week, so he works 50 days basically out of the year to take care of, you know, residential and agricultural needs as far as drainage and stuff like that, so we've been able to do a little bit of that, and Carl's a huge asset. He's been there for close to 30 years now, not with our office, but he was with NRCS, which was part of, in our office, but wasn't under our payroll. And that, you know, last five years since he retired from there, he's worked for us on a very limited basis, but, and that's, that's why I'm excited about this position because we'll have another person in our office, and very little funding needs to come from the general fund because they're willing to pay 75% of that, and as you know, they're state match. We'll get twice what, what you give to us, so basically, we're only looking at, you know, 4,500 bucks or something like, just to fund the position, but at the same time, we need enough funding to do what we have already. We can't, we can't afford to get another position in when we can't afford to do the little bit that we are doing. And my hat's off to Caroline. We believe she's been doing a wonderful job. If anyone doesn't think so, let us know and we'll see what we can do about it, but she, she really filled the shoes of Chip, and, you know, Chip filled the shoes of the person before that, so I think we've been, been building our program up. I know that the, um, our fees have been coming in, they've been steadily increasing. I think we're up to close to $13,000 from last year. The year before that was around $9,000 that we brought in. So I mean, both with the billing and probably doing the job a little better, we've been able to increase that, and as you know, that, that comes to you. So I guess with that, I'd like to have either Chip or Randy come up and explain the position a little bit and why they came to us, and then, you know, we'll open up for questions and we'll go from there.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Randy White. I'm a Wildlife Officer with the Division of Wildlife. I'm just going to give you guys like a little bit of background, kind of how we operate. The Division of Wildlife is broken into five districts. We're in District 3 in northeast Ohio. There's one Wildlife Officer per county, so I am it for Lorraine County. We have some office staff that kind of helps us out with some of the broader things that cover the 19 counties, but my job responsibilities vary from doing enforcement of hunting, fishing, and trapping laws, to stream pollutions, to helping assist the public with nuisance wildlife, and in Lorraine County specifically is kind of why, it is why Lorraine County, we decided to come here with this position, was a substantial portion of my work is directed towards nuisance animals in Lorraine County. Now, we're talking everything from, you know, crop damage and property damage, the landscape and everything from deer, people having issues with raccoons and skunks and possums and bats. This time of year, Canada goose or Canada geese, you know, we have, in these retention basins, everybody's trying to control runoff and housing developments and stuff like that. We're dealing with lots of Canada goose complaints and that. And this Wildlife Specialist Position, essentially what is, would happen here is that it gives another person, it doubles the effort that can be put forth to assist residents in Lorraine County with their issues with nuisance wildlife. I mean, there are other responsibilities and stuff that would be beneficial with soil and water and some other things, but the major positive help would be in dealing with these nuisance issues with wildlife. So, and to go a little bit farther on that, we had talked to, I had talked to Lieutenant Ashdown at the Sheriff's Department, had him pull some of the phone calls. They had 132 requests for assistance with nuisance wildlife last year. Mind you, dispatch was able to pass a lot of those off essentially to me, is what happens, but it, every year, I provide an updated kind of like cheat sheet to all of the dispatches for all of the law enforcement agencies in Lorraine County to try to essentially help them help me when they get these phone calls that they can kind of help me out by giving these people the answers they're looking for. So it's a, the position is one that is essentially going to benefit all of those law enforcement agencies, benefit myself, and benefit mostly the residents in being able to give somebody else to help provide them assistance with those nuisance issues, so...
So with the smaller animals, do you trap and release those?
It all depends. A lot of them, trap and release isn't an option because of disease issues, and if they're a nuisance for one person, we move them somewhere else, it's just going to be a continued nuisance. So, but a lot of this is, is education and getting people to understand what they can and can't do and how to do it, and referring them to nuisance wildlife removal companies. You know, a lot of that, we call it technical assistance, a lot of just educating the people over the phone on how they can handle the situations that they're presented with. You know, as Will talked about, when you have this mixture of rural and urban, all of this suburban area on the fringe is where these people that, you know, are from urban areas but are in a situation where they're running into a lot more wildlife than they're used to, and they don't know what to do with it. People out in rural areas, if they have an issue with a raccoon, they just deal with it. There is no phone call made. In, you know, urban situations or these, this fringe area, these people don't know what to do. So it's really trying to address those issues with those people and to help them out.
So what do you do for the deer population, the overdeer population?
There's different stuff we can do as far as if people have issues with gardens and landscaping, provide recommendations as far as alternate plantings they can do, harassment techniques, exclusionary techniques to put up, a lot of working with that. We work with municipalities and try to do hunting programs. I mean, hunting is how we control the deer population in the state of Ohio. So working with municipalities on how that can be accomplished in a safe manner and in a manner that's palatable to the public, you know, in a political setting. So there's a lot to work through and all of that, and that's part of what I do, it's a lot of what Jeff does. This person, you know, this position would help assist with all of that, so, and being that there's only one of me, I have 40 hours a week to devote to all of this umbrella of stuff, and this position doubles that effort easily, or not, if not more. So, and the Division of Wildlife is providing three-quarters of the funding for this, so we have to operate under a personnel cap where we can only have so many positions. So what we try to do is to work with, you know, counties in this manner, is one of the ways we do this, is that we find joint positions where we can help provide funding for it to benefit everybody, but we don't have it under our umbrella of an employee, but we're able to provide the funding for that, so...
Still trying to determine, is this a year-to-year proposal? Is there like a minimum three years?
I'll let Jeff speak to that. He's kind of more on that angle of it.
Yeah, so typically, how we write the agreements up is it is a one year with a renewal of another year, so basically a two-year agreement, but there is an out for the county. If all of a sudden you guys say, hey, you know, finances as they are, there's no way we can fund this, there, there is an out for you guys to get out of it. But honestly, we've got, this position in 22 of the 88 counties, we don't lose the position in those counties. Once that position gets in that county, the residents of the county, the Soil and Water Board, the Commissioners see the tremendous value in that position. It's almost, I know it's hard to say this because of everybody's in financial hardships and trying to make, you know, dollars match up, but as a 75% match, the beauty of this position is that position is essentially, he's, the person is, is funding themselves in a sense, so they have to work towards, you know, driving the system as well. So the position usually does a pretty good job of internally identifying ways to increase funding to the Soil and Water Office to help, you know, offset some of that cost, so usually with like their tree, seedling sales and everything, it can reach out more, do some more education, and drive that system a little bit more as well. The other advantage to the county is that you, this position works hand-in-hand with the residents, not only from a nuisance standpoint, because they certainly are a tremendous asset in that regard, to being able to be much more responsive allows Randy to focus on the enforcement aspects so that, you know, the wildlife populations aren't, you know, being decimated, you know, you guys, having the lakeshore right here, he does enforcement of the fisheries up there as well as the wild animals, you know, on the ground. So it allows him to focus efforts on that while this position helps out the residents, but it also works with the agricultural producers as well. There's a lot of programs out there for, to put money in their hands to help them either offset, either, not just offset, but I guess to get conservation programs on their properties, which actually puts money, so the federal government has conservation programs, they can put into those, and so instead of farming it, it goes into conservation, and there's still money coming in to their pocket to help offset that as well. So it's really a dual-purpose position, and this county's prime for it because, again, you guys have on the north end a lot of urban landscape, goose issues, you know, or no shortage of those. This person can be much more responsive, get out to people's properties, give them much more assistance. They also do the permitting for, for animals as well, so if there's goose permits that need to be issued, they can help facilitate that, but then on the southern end of the county with all the agricultural land, helping out those landowners as well. So this county really is prime, and, you know, like, like you said at the beginning there, you know, we, we basically prioritize out our counties and said, which counties would we want this position in, and Lorraine County was at the top of the list there as far as, you know, where it would be highly beneficial. not just offset, but I guess to get, uh, conservation programs on their properties, which actually puts money in their, so the federal government has conservation programs. They can put into those. And so instead of farming it, it goes into conservation and there's still money coming in, uh, to their pocket to help offset that as well. So, um, it's really a dual-purpose position. And this county's prime for it because again, you guys have on the north end, a lot of urban, uh, landscape goose issues, you know, or no shortage of those. This person can be much more responsive, get out to people's properties, give them much more assistance. They also do the permitting for, uh, for, uh, animals as well. So if there's goose permits that need to be issued, they can help facilitate that. But then on the southern end of the county with all the agricultural land, helping out those, uh, landowners as well. So this county really is prime and, and, um, you know, like, like you said at the beginning there, you know, we, we basically prioritize out our counties and said which counties would we want this position in. And then Lorain County was at the top of the list there as far as, uh, you know, where it would be highly beneficial. Uh, both from our end and, and from your guys' and the resident's end.
So this person would designate their one-hundred percent time to Lorain County or are they still divided between counties or jurisdictions?
Great question. And it's a, beauty of the position actually is that, so in this case, what we're looking at is funding it at seventy-five percent. So we look at, at them devoting seventy-five percent of their time towards wildlife-related issues, whether it be education or, or, you know, working with landowners or whatever. So seventy-five percent of their time is worked or dedicated to wildlife issues. The other twenty-five percent of the time can be devoted to whatever, uh, you guys feel is appropriate. So we have some counties that help where that person actually helps out the county auditor and doing CAUV assessments and stuff like that. Uh, can help out with the Soil and Water Office. Um, it kind of, they're kind of like a floating person that can kind of help out where needed on various tasks. And every county kind of utilizes that percentage of that person's time in different ways. I, I, it would probably be good to mention that the seventy-five percent that we're offering up is a huge percentage. We only have one other county in, in the state that we offer up a seventy-five percent match. Most counties are only at a twenty-five percent match. Uh, because we've had some additional federal funding that has been made available to us, we're trying to funnel that up your guys' way and, and help, you know, not, you know, not have to, uh, have you guys put seventy-five percent towards it, just doing the twenty-five percent.
But once again, this individual would be focused on just Lorain County. They're not having to divide their time between Medina County or.
Yep, yep, all Lorain County.
Whatever, okay. And I guess having served in Columbus, I can say this and please take this in the right way. But, uh, you know, the, the oddity of the whole thing is that, uh, you know, we're in the position we're in because we're receiving fewer dollars from Columbus.
Yeah.
So, uh, it's, you know, when, when the state says, hey, we got a great deal for you, we're thinking, well, if you would have sent us the money in the first place, we might have been able to staff, you know, put the staffing that we needed.
We're, we're kind of unique. Uh, we don't work off any GRF funds from the state. We work off of both, uh, either from license sales that we, uh, generate, you know, in-house, uh, from hunting license, fishing license, that kind of thing. But we also work off of federal reimbursement through the Pittman Robertson and Dingle Johnson Acts that basically, if you go and buy a fishing rod, if you go buy a box of ammunition, there's an excise tax on that that goes to the federal government. And then the states get a portion of money out of that, that, those acts to come back to the states. That's how we get our funding. So I, I get you because it does seem kind of backwards, but, um, it wouldn't be, uh, it wouldn't be GRF money. So that is kind of a separate whole pot, I guess. And that's why, like I said, you know, you know, we've had this bump up in federal, um, allotments to allow us to be able to, to, you know, work it towards getting some more of these positions across the state. So it's a little different than just simply GRF monies.
I have a question for you, Jeff, in regards to that funding issue that when the excise tax on the sale of those products, those back through DC and then back through the state of Ohio, is it then a portion based on a population basis or is it based on where it's derived from? Because in regards, we're having new Cabela's this year, which is going to sell a lot of fishing rods, I'm assuming.
Correct.
So, I mean, how does that money turn back to us? Is there a formula that says Lorain County sold X, so Lorain County gets this many dollars?
It doesn't work, uh, from county to county. It works on a state level. So, but, but having Cabela's here, you know, and that's why we work hard to work on having a great wildlife fishery up on Lake Erie, having a good deer herd in the state to, you know, from a hunting standpoint, because hunting license, uh, and fishing license sales do factor into that, uh, amount that gets a portion back to us. Um, and so while it's not county-based, having Cabela's here is a tremendous benefit because that does draw people into, the state does have, uh, an opportunity to get people to buy more licensing, whether it be just to go up and fish on Lake Erie or whatever. So, um, it does kind of tie into it, not directly though.
Okay, there's no direct tie in there, if that's what I was asking.
Which other county received, uh, seventy-five percent?
Noble.
Noble County.
Yeah. Most of these positions, this program's been around since the late nineties. Most of the, uh, positions that are, were, uh, were, uh, that got, you know, most of the counties that took advantage of it back in that time was strictly dedicated towards and really geared towards deer damage. Uh, down in the southern part, uh, we get a lot of, uh, landowners have problems with deer damage. So it was really geared towards that initially. As times gone on, uh, we've kind of morphed it and kind of, you know, tailored it to the times. And, um, and Lorain County is a prime example of that. So this person I, I view as, you know, from our side of it, is a person that is working much more with the urban landscape, which is somewhat similar to Erie County. Erie County has one as well, and he does focus in some of that, you know, up in like Sandusky and stuff and some of the urban landscape stuff. Um, but with, uh, certainly, uh, the deer issues that have been at hand, you know, we've got several cities in, in northern Lorain County that have experienced deer issues. Again, somebody that can work, um, you know, much more, is kind of like the go-to person to help work, uh, hand-in-hand with those issues with them.
I was told recently, and, and I hope I have this correct, that Lorain County is either number one or number two for, for deer vehicle accidents in the state. I was told it was pretty high. Maybe it was, I thought I was talking to somebody in the insurance industry who was indicating that, but.
It's pretty high, yeah. I mean, you have a lot of highways going through the county, so it is pretty high. I don't know where it ranks, uh, statewide, but it is definitely towards the top of the list there.
And how long has Noble been part of the program? Or did they just sign up recently?
Just signed up, yeah. So that, they're, because they're that seventy-five percent match. Like I said, historically, it's always been that twenty-five percent match. So most counties are sitting at twenty-five percent. Um, we just had two new ones, Noble and Jackson. Jackson went in at fifty percent and then Noble, uh, uh, expressed interest at seventy-five percent. So, um, those are the only other two counties at this point that are above that twenty-five percent.
Now, was this, uh, ODNR coming up to us or was this our Soil and Water coming down asking ODNR to participate?
Yeah, it's usually, believe it or not, it's usually the Soil and Water Office reaching out to us saying, hey, we want to take advantage of this position. Uh, that's going on in Athens County right now. The Soil and Water Office has come to us saying, hey, we'd like to get a specialist in Athens County. The completely different thing, situation up here. Uh, you know, we came to, to the Soil and Water Office and said, hey, we got this position, um, you know, it's been available for years, but because we've got this ability to increase this, uh, percentage to you, um, and we know that this county would be a great county for, you know, we, we reached out to them and said, hey, would you be interested in doing this? They were very interested in it. Obviously, the funding issue is what come, what it comes down to is, is can we fund that position? From our end, no problem. We got the seventy-five percent covered. It's, you know, how can we come up with that extra, the extra twenty-five percent? And, uh, you know, I've already laid out some great ideas for the Soil and Water Office to say, hey, you know, we get this person in, here's some ideas of how they can generate some more funds to help, you know, bring money into the county to, uh, uh, you know, help essentially fund the position overall.
There is a fee structure then to capture the other twenty-five percent?
No fee structure. It's just basically, um, it's just, uh, I mean, there's nothing set in stone. So it's basically that person would be working to help generate more funds for the county, you know, um.
For example?
For example, so sometimes, uh, you know, like I said, through like the tree seedling sale, it's not a lot, but every little bit helps towards getting towards that twenty-five percent. So simply getting more information out, working towards that can help increase that tree seedling sale. Um, one of the ideas I pitched out to them was, um, down that same concept, but something we haven't done, uh, and I was looking at Cuyahoga County because obviously a lot of cities are that way, but certainly can be applicable to Lorain County as well, is, uh, deer resistant plant sales. Uh, certainly a lot of interest in that. And so having the, uh, Soil and Water Office facilitate, that could be a way to, that is n- new program that hasn't been generating any money at this point, could generate money for the county as well. Um, sometimes also, uh, you know, working towards with these, uh, landowners, um, certainly they get into some of these federal farm bill programs. Certainly that's income coming in as well. So that goes back into the county tax, uh, that they're paying at the end of the year as well.
So the twenty-five percent match is ninety-five hundred dollars, so you would actually need half of that from us and then, or the whole amount?
Well, I mean, it all comes back to, I'm sorry, it all comes back to being able to fund everything that we do. I mean, like I said, we're just basically doing Caroline's job and we need a secretary there because they're the ones that do everything that we need to do for the state to receive their state match. And, um, so it's, it's kind of a package deal. Wish it wasn't, but it kind of is just, we need to fulfill our position to keep the county of, of Lorain County, um, in compliance with the EPA with the soil erosion.
That's all the MPDES money, which is, we funded you out of stormwater last year to tune it, what, twenty-five thousand dollars there? And then thirty-four thousand out of our general funds, about fifty-nine thousand?
Yeah, that's what we received last year.
And that's what you're asking for, plus forty-five? No.
No, it's, it's.
Go ahead, Will, now your budget presentation.
You know, we're just, we, we, we do, we need a bit more. Um, you know, I don't, maybe we kind of outlined where some of the funding can come from and, you know, if we could get, if we get close to that ninety-five, that'd be great.
It's your budget presentation, go ahead, bring it.
Because you were talking.
To get near it, do you have some ideas then in regards to that?
Yes, um, well, as you know, we, we, the, the building that we rent is county-owned and that's basically twenty-one thousand a year that we, we paid to that. And then, um, there's a farm ground rental that's, um, it's eighteen thousand, a hundred fifty. And, um, the, uh, the fees, the stormwater fees is, uh, twelve thousand, eight hundred fifty. And then we're hoping that the additional could come from the, um, Lorain County's, the stormwater district fees.
Are you still, you're still looking for, what, one-seventy-seven, hundred-seventy?
A hundred-seventy-seven is the full budget.
That's your total.
That's including the state match.
Right, 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 okay.
Basically, you know, we're looking at ninety-five, but, you know, if we can get close, it don't have to be ninety-five, but if we can get close to that, you know, I think that leaves with about thirty-five thousand coming from, coming from the stormwater, uh, fees.
Anything you are going to try to do?
Another thing I really like about this position, it's a partnership. And the more partners you have, the bigger the hole is. I mean, I know that as a business owner, you know, you got a lot of contacts, you run into a problem, you can just call them up because they're your friend, you're working with them already. And it just makes it easier. So if, you know, if someone's got a problem up there in, in Avon Lake or whatever, we've got someone here. You know, it's just, it just makes, I think it'll work, the benefit for the whole county, I think it, it'll really help. And like I said, it's, it's a, I know it's, it's a minimal amount, but at the same time, we, we need a little bit more funding. I completely understand your position too.
It just kills us that the state has, uh, you know, a big, huge surplus of all of our money sitting there and then now they want to just nickel and dime us with it. Even, I know it's only twenty-five percent, but still, it's more money that the state is asking from us when they have all of our money. Everybody's money, not just ours. It's a hard, hard pill to swallow. Not your fault.
It's no one's fault, no one's here's fault.
Oh, yeah, it is. No one's here's fault, right?
Right. No one's here's fault.
We've got a couple of weeks we have to make a decision on this, to look through the budget numbers and everything. We're still, because our budget isn't approved yet for the year yet.
Okay.
We'll saw.
All right. Um, and another, um, I've talked to Don Romanci, maybe you guys are aware, he's got some choose and need to be filled that the Health District, um, had and they're not able to fulfill the obligation. And that, and that's something that, you know, this person can maybe, can help out with.
What was that?
Don Romancik, he, he mentioned that, uh, there was a, um, that the General Health District had, there's a grant or some, I don't know the full details of it, but they weren't able to fulfill their obligation to, to do the grant and, um.
Is that for the cleanup?
I have no idea.
Can you add more to that, Lori?
Lori. Lori, you've got to come up and talk to the microphone.
Come up to the mic, please.
It only looks like I wasn't listening to you.
Been pretty quiet today.
My understanding is part of the Chagrin River Restoration Act, they have a, um, a joint venture going on with, um, Erie County. And, um, they want to take over the Black River. And Don wants to keep that Black River in Lorain County, and this is a way of doing it.
That's the, uh, the whole RAP group and.
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll talk with him, come to speed on that. I, I, I was, I know that there's been a move to consolidate and of course, different designations on the river's condition also, uh, changed the funding stream. We talked about that last year, so I'll have a chat with him on that. Thanks.
I just want to throw that out there, it could be something that, you know, if we were able to get this position, it's some, something we can do. I mean, we're more willing to help to work with, with the county in anything we do, so.
You've been good partners, we really have.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything you do for our MPDES in regards to, you know, the runoff and everything, so.
Yeah, as the Commissioner pointed out, we've got a few more weeks. Yeah, we got to kind of fine-tune the budget, figure out where we're going, but I know you need an answer by the end of the month.
Well, we do, we need, we need to have our funds in by April thirtieth, as it has been the last couple of years. But I'm not sure on this position as far as when we need to know by.
Quick, because we're down, we're doing our operational budgeting right now. So, um, abs, I mean, if I know that the position is looking good, I can make that, uh, you know, make them hold that money down in, you know, in our office in Columbus. Um, if, so I guess the sooner we know, the better. If, if we could know in two weeks, that would be ideal. Um, if we go much, I, I don't think we can go past the end of March. Once we get past that, all our budgets will be submitted to the Governor's Office, so, or down that way to, to Broad Street. So, um, the sooner we can know, the better. Like I said, the, one thing I guess I'll, I'll leave you with is it's not a tremendous amount of money. I know every penny counts, but again, we're looking at a one-year with a one-year renewal. If you guys at the end of the year say, you know what, this position isn't generating funds, isn't meeting a, a, you know, a necessity for the county, scrap it and we'll move on.
Well, Jeff, a question for you in regards to the budget. Our budgets are due by the end of March. Your state budget isn't until July one. Is this a position that would be fun and then July one till June thirtieth of seventeen?
Correct, yes.
That's the timeline, okay, so, all right.
That's when you anticipate having the person there July first, real position and.
Yeah, that, yeah, the sooner, yeah, obviously times tick and pass. So the sooner we know that the position's going to be there, the sooner we can reach out and start, you know, reaching out for, uh, uh, you know, a job posting and stuff like that to try to get the interview process and all that done to get them ready to go by the turn of fiscal year.
Okay.
And I just want to reiterate, I, I completely understand the frustration with, with the state money and everything. I just want to make sure you understand that the Division of Wildlife is a hundred percent self-funded. We take no general money. And the money for this position, part of it is reimbursed from those excise taxes, which again, is money that's not available for anything else. So none of this money is money that is available anywhere else. So we're not like shifting stuff around. It's a complete different, you know, alleyway of how it's getting here.
Gotcha.
So I completely understand the frustration. I just want you to realize that this is a hundred percent separate.
Yeah.
It's like gas tax goes to take care of roads and bridges.
Right.
Right, exactly. I get the frustration, but I just hate the fact that we're labeled because we're with the state. I get it.
Yeah, I know.
Guess what?
We get tied into all the other state requirements.
Yeah.
And it, it's challenging for us as well.
Okay.
Thank you for cutting it.
Well, thank you. We'll be back in touch.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Madam Clerk, Resolutions?
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Preparations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on service sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorain County Commissioners?
Administrator Cordez.
Thank you, Commissioner. I do have a, a few brief things I want to go with the board. Potential hire, hires at Job Family Services, um, Record Center, possibly in the parking garage. Also potential purchase and sale of real estate and pending litigation. All three of those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussion. So I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, we go into executive session and talk about those items. Thank you.
Approve away the reading of the minutes of March second?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Advertised bids for Lorain County Justice Center facade repairs, notice being the Chronicle March twenty-second and twenty-ninth. Mandatory pre-bid meeting at the Justice Center on April seventh at two o'clock and open at two o'clock on April twenty-first.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Advertised bids for Domestic Relations Court, additional magistrate hearing rooms, notice being the Chronicle March fifteenth and twenty-second. Mandatory pre-bid meeting at the Justice Center on March twenty-fourth at two and open at two on March thirty-first.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under Children and Family, establish Lorain County healthier Buckeye Council in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code three-five-five-point-oh-two and designate Lorain County Children and Families Council to serve as a member, apply, receive, and oversee the administration of the grant.
So moved.
Second.
Administrator Cordez.
We should have spoke quicker. I want to hold this for one more week. I had a conversation with you with, with regard to some, some concerns you had
I had a conversation with you with, with regard to some, some concerns you had, and I want to make sure that I properly have addressed those before we make a designation.
Well, I don't have a problem with them being the designation, but I also want to look at possibly the, the people that were here last week presenting their program, be a part of it, so.
I understand, I want to make our intentions known before we-
So I withdraw my motion.
You know, I just want to make sure there's, there's an understanding of scope and breadth and some things that we may want looked at. It's easier to do it beforehand than it is to chase after it. We have, we have a little time.
Okay.
Uh, we'll, we'll run concurrent processes and keep moving, but I have to have a secondary conversation.
Okay.
Yeah, so I withdrew my motion.
And I withdrew a second, yeah.
Yep.
Community Development War Contract to Solid Ground Construction, Inc., Westlake, in amount of thirty-two thousand, two hundred seventy-nine dollars, which includes contingency for any unforeseen changes for K-Champion at four-one-one-nine Nicker Rock Road, Sheffield Lake, to receive grant assistance from CHIP, program year fourteen, homeowner rehab.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion?
No, it's just a shame we didn't get a company out of Lorraine County to do this, and I know we were short on bids.
Well, well, let me tell you, it, it's, it's not just a shame, I'm completely frustrated, and, and here, here's what I've done.
It's not due to a lack of effort.
Yeah.
Well, we need to increase our effort. You know, when you don't get the outcome you need, you just got to work harder. And from now on, and I, I've instructed it to be done this way, regardless of whether somebody has shown an interest in this work, we're going to list everybody in Lorraine County that does this type of work, and we're going to send them the information, whether they ask for it or not. Uh, because, you know, the, the entrepreneurs out there are busy being in business, so we, we got to, we got to do a little better effort. We, we do a good job, don't get me wrong, but, but there's still room for a bigger job. I, I want work to stay in Lorraine County, I want this type of rehab to be done in Lorraine County. I also don't want to be in an unenviable position with myself or for you as board members, where somebody says, I wish I had known about that. And it, it's really easy for us to go, well, why didn't you call us, or why? I want to be able to say, look, we've done everything, we've sent you emails, we've, we've, we've exhausted the, the ability to contact you, and the only words you have to blame for not having this work in Lorraine County is yourself. So we're going to double our efforts.
We're going through the BIA, right?
Well, we've gone through the BIA, we've gone through, we've done everything, we've held seminar.
Yeah, with the BIA.
Right.
So, we're, we're gonna, we're going to make sure, we're going to make sure positively that they get more information than, than it wants, so maybe we can catch a few additional fish to give us some bids. I'm sure it's a great company out of Westlake, and I'm not trying to diminish their capability, but I would really like to be saying, it's a company in Lorraine County that's getting these funds and helping our community.
Yeah, well, I think as you pointed out, you know, when you run a small business, you're busy with your day-to-day operation, you got to take care of what's in the pipeline, it's trying to put stuff back into the pipeline at the beginning, that I think any small business owner would admit is some, sometimes an area that's not paid attention to. But the other part is that, you know, people tend to think that there's all this paperwork you got to go through if you're dealing with the government, you know, we're willing to walk you through this and make this as, uh, uh, simple as, as possible. The other nice part about it, I mean, unless you do awful work, you're going to get paid.
We always.
We always pay.
Right, and, and there, there are some forms that have to be filled out, these are federal grant money, so we have a lot of reporting requirements, but Commissioner Lundey is, is accurate. We will walk people through it, as we will work through it. There's some compliance issues, some folks don't do this work because they don't want to be bothered with those compliance issues. But, but we need to double our efforts. Even if we don't get any more bids, I want to be able to say, we worked real hard at it. Our folks are doing a great job upstairs, I don't want you to think that they're not. But we need to find out what the barriers are and try to take down those barriers, so that more of this work stays here at home. I mean, we've seen contracts go to Norwalk, we've seen them go to East Cleveland, we've seen them go down to Medina. I want to, I want, this, a small percentage of that, a smaller percentage of that to be occurring. So we're gonna, we're gonna work harder on this.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Amendment Resolution fifteen-six-eighty-two, adopted October fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, entering in the very leases with JFS and CSEA, effective July first, two thousand fifteen through June thirty, two thousand sixteen, for space at forty-two, forty-five North Ridge Road, Elyria. JFS will decrease three thousand, four hundred ninety-six dollars and thirteen cents per month, so the monthly new payment is forty-six, four thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and sixty cents. And child support decreases one thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and one cent per month, new payment is two thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste, approve contract with Liberty Tire Services of Ohio LLC, DBA Liberty Tire Recycling LLC, Minerva, for operation and scrap tire collection and recycling program for the year two thousand and six, with options to renew in seventeen and eighteen.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under Workforce Amendment Resolution number fifteen-six-eighty-four, adopted October fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, entering into lease with workforce development, effective July first, two thousand fifteen through June thirty, two thousand sixteen, for space at forty-two, four ninety-five North Ridge Road, Elyria. Amendment is to increase their monthly payment, um, of one thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-two cents per month, so the new payment is eight thousand, thirty-four dollars.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
I have no additional comments this morning, thank you.
Mr. Anis?
Um, I think I have the same pending litigation, Mr. Cordez.
Commissioners' report.
Uh, let's see, lots of events this week, Young Dems had an event, Difference Makers, congratulations to Mr. and Mrs. Nicely for being Democrats of the Year. Judy Nedwick had a great fish fry, uh, really nice job there. And then on Saturday, I was actually at New Russia Township Hall, the new one, they call it the Lodge, and the whole thing was opened up, they had probably a thousand people there, and it was for Monster Girls Traveling Softball Team. And they had three comedians that just cracked us up, they were really, really good, really nice time spaghetti dinner, and so it was a nice time, everybody enjoyed themselves. This morning, we had our, uh, Lorraine County Industrial Development Corporation meeting, and that went quickly, luckily, so we had time to get into this meeting. I also have been in contact with, um, Tom Kelly, our Emergency Management Director. We had implemented the WENS, uh, system, which is the emergency notification system. Um, anybody with a landline was automatically plugged into this emergency, um, system, but those other people that have to sign up for it, there's only like ten thousand people. So I, we need to find a way to get the word out to people, so that they will sign up for this, because it's very important. I, I don't know a good way of doing that, but maybe we need to put a couple of ads in the paper or something to just, just get the word out, get people signed up, so.
Got you.
I'm going to talk with Tom Kelly, he has been on the radio a couple of times, talking about it.
That's the Emergency Alert email system.
Yeah, well, it's email, or phone, or text, or there's different ways that you can get that information, and-
That's the, uh, that's the reverse nine-one-one that we-
Well, that's, that's actually a, a vendor's reversed, but it's not that, it's called WENS.
Yeah, I, I mean, well, we, our generic term for it, that's the one we did for the whole community.
Yes.
You know, the, each community pays into that, and, and I wish that-
It's like five cents a person in their community.
Right, and some of the communities were paying as much as twenty-five, thirty cents a person before we did that global contract.
Right.
Each community is paying for their residents, we need their help.
To get the word out, yeah.
To get the word out, so let me, uh, let me, let me get some correspondents out to the communities and ask them to assist us with this. And, and possibly if we collaborate, we can come up with a little money to run, you know, add in the paper or something. Uh, because we only, we only collect on that direct cost that it, that to pay the contract from those communities. So we need, we need to, we need a greater partnership to be able to, ads are not inexpensive, and so, uh, let me see what I can do with that.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that. And then one thing, when we had our land bank meeting a couple of weeks ago, um, we didn't have any coverage on that, but I wanted to mention, Chris Pionowski from the Prosecutor's Office has been on top of going after properties that have not paid their taxes, and he'll go, put them through foreclosure, whatever they need to do, and luckily, we have the land bank that's helping in this process, but Chris Pionowski has collected over two million dollars of taxes from people's property that back taxes, and he's looking, he has a goal of five million this year. So I just want to really give credit to the Prosecutor's Office and the hard work that they're doing, and most of that money goes to the schools, you know, the county gets a little bit, but really, it's helping out the schools and getting-
The bulk, the bulk of it goes to, to the schools, so it really, really lowers the burden. We try not to embarrass folks, Commissioner, I think people will be stunned the amount of people that are in arrears, and some of them have no real good reason.
Right.
I was trying to choose my words carefully, uh, they just play the, they play the, uh, the tax game. And it, it's, it's been a really great tool. We put the land bank into existence, I think it was three years ago, Commissioner Kayla, was it?
Four, that she started, yeah.
Uh, and, and we've used that tool very creatively to improve this community. In fact, we're, we're doing something today that's very unique, working with the City of Lorraine, uh, the Catholic Charities, the Port Authority and the Land Bank to-
Is that today?
It's this morning, I actually signed a blank check, my hand was shaking, I gave Metzger a blank check on the Port Authority of Funds.
We'll miss him.
To, uh, you know, try to procure something out of foreclosure, so that we could work on a community solution to help Lorraine move the homeless shelter, and, and I can talk a little bit about that, because it's past the time. But it's a, it's a really great, when four or five agencies come together to find a solution.
I just wanted to give credit where credit is due, and-
Does a good job.
Thanks, Dennis Will, for letting Chris do all this for us, so, enter my report.
Uh, yeah, very busy week on top of all of the events that we attended. Uh, Lorraine County Solid Waste Policy Committee meeting on Tuesday, we welcome our new public member, replacing Brian Parsons, our longtime Chair, who was from Avon, I'd like to welcome Heather Adelman from Oberlin. Uh, actually worked for the EPA in California at one point, she's with the Oberlin Project now, yeah, she worked with the native tribes in regards to their solid waste issues, so it's nice to have her part of the board. Lorraine County Economic Development Investment Corporation met this morning, as Commissioner Koski said, uh, just clean up paperwork and a couple of resolutions. Couple issues, condolences out to Mike Tillman, who was with the Palace Civic Centers, or Tech Guy, great guy, I've known him for a long time, passed away suddenly, fifty-nine years of age in his sleep, condolences to his wife Diane and his family, and then the entire Palace family. They all rallied around with the new, uh, board that's there, and are doing a lot of new things, that exciting for that place, and I had served a long time. Thank you, by the way, the Palace Coffee Cup this morning on my desk that you found somewhere.
I was cleaning out my cupboards at home in the process of moving, and, uh, found that, I, I had one somewhere, a Palace package, and it had a, a coffee cup in it, it had a, uh, Post-it notes with the chandelier on it.
Okay.
And then it also had, uh, some popcorn cups that you could put popcorn in, so it was, and some old movies that I never watched.
Well, they're doing some neat things over there with newer stuff. Also, just a couple of comments, we had the MRDD presentation this morning, just so people realize, uh, your tax dollars, what they do, not only regards developmental disabilities, but as she spoke about Aiden, the early childhood, developmentally disabled child, she talked about how the Elyria City Schools paid for a full-time nurse, that's where your tax dollars are going in regards to your schools, where when our tax dollars are, you know, diverted to the charter schools, who don't have to take those at-needs or at-risk children. Uh, it's truly important people realize how important that the service that our public schools provide. So I'm a very strong proponent of our, uh, public schools, our teachers, the administrators, uh, they do a great job, and just, this just shows you another part that they do that most people probably don't realize. Also, good luck, Lorraine Titans tonight, and our other teams from around here that are in, uh, basketball state playoffs. And next Tuesday, March fifteenth, don't forget to exercise your right to vote. It's a very interesting year, to say the least. Uh, we won't talk about hands up here, but, you know, it's nice to see what we're doing as we move forward in regards to our federal government. We wonder why we have some of the issues we have. That's the end of my report.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo the, the concerns about the way things work with the, the charter schools, is that, you know, the dollars follow the student, uh, but the, the charters, you know, they don't have to take everybody, it knocks on the front door. However, if the student goes to the charter and things don't work out, the money doesn't come back to the public schools. Once it goes to the charter side of the ledger, it, it stays over there, so, uh, it's an unfortunate thing, but, uh, it's not a, not a good way of, um, funding education. So also wanted to congratulate the Nicely family on being recognized, uh, by the, uh, the Young Dems at their dinner, the Nicely family, just an amazing family, and, uh, they do so much in, in the community along with their son.
Finally get to vote for the first time.
Yeah.
They've been so involved all this time.
Yeah, that's really cool. Yeah, Judy Nedwick had a very nice, uh, event, uh, as we hit all the fish fries on Fridays throughout the county, but had a very nice event there, just wanted to say happy birthday to Elyria Councilwoman Brenda Davis, they had a surprise party for her on, on Saturday. Also, I had the chance to attend the auto show on Sunday, took my father out there, and, uh, my dad kept looking at where all the cars were made, and he's like, no, this one's made in Poland, and this one's made here and there, and, um, just personally, it's disappointing to see how many domestic autos are actually made someplace else, and, uh, you know, we're fortunate at Ohio Assembly to bring those jobs from Mexico here, but still, there's far too many cars, domestic autos that are being made overseas, it'd certainly be nice to have those, uh, jobs here at home. We know how to build cars in Lorraine County, so, uh, give us a call, we'll work things out for you. And as Commissioner Kayla pointed out, please, uh, exercise, uh, your right to vote, it's important to vote. If you can get out there and vote early, that's always a good thing to do, that's what I always do, because I never knew if I was going to be in Columbus or busy that day, and racing over to vote at the last minute, so. But do get out and exercise your right to vote, so that completes my report.
Board Correspondents?
I move that the Board Correspondents be waived, and that we, or waive the reading, rather, of the Board Correspondents.
Second.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wish to speak during public comment?